To honor the September the 4th, 2014 Rutherford County School Board meeting, and our first thing is the Pledge of Allegiance, who is tonight going to be led by Mr. Jacob Moore, who is an eighth grade student at Whitworth Buchanan School, and also the son of one of our newest board members, Ms. Lisa Moore.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jacob.
It's good for us to see our students at our meetings and all that kind of help us remind them why we exist and what we do, because that's what we're about as students. For a moment of silence this evening, I want to remember one of our teachers' father passed away, and she is one of the agriculture teachers at Oakland High School, Ms. Bonnie Holman, Mr. Dehoff, who is known in the Muffler area for a number of years. So just remember that family, please, during a moment of silence, if you will. Thank you. The first item on the agenda this evening would be the election of the 2014-15 school board officers. And the first one is the chairman of the Rutherford County School Board for this year. And so the floor is now open for nominations for the chair of the Rutherford County School Board for 2014-15.
Mr. Odom, I'd like to nominate Wayne Blair.
Okay, Wayne Blair is nominated. Do I see it here, second to that motion?
Second to motion.
Second to that motion. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Need a motion to cease?
I'll move to closed nominations and elect Mr. Blair by acclamation.
Okay, second to that?
Second.
Second to that? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, black sign? It's approved. Mr. Blair, you are now the school board chair for 2014. Congratulations, I think, for that.
Thank you, Mr. Odom.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, board members. Certainly an honor and a pleasure to get to serve, and a privilege also. So again, thank you very much. Next order of business will be to elect a vice chair. So the floor is now open for nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Terry Hodge.
Mr. Young has nominated Chairman Hodge. Second by Mr. Estes. Any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I move that nominations be closed, and Mr. Hodge be elected by acclamation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Hodge. And Chairman Hodge, thank you for your leadership and your mentoring, and we're certainly grateful for everything that you've brought to this board, and we'll be grateful for your continued mentoring. The really cool thing is that you'll always be Chairman Hodge, so you'll always have that moniker. Okay, we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
Sub move.
Second.
Are there any questions about the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. We have two new members, so if you find something in the consent agenda that you would like to have moved out of, to be voting on separately, that's certainly your option. Of course, we did not have a work session to go through all this this week, but I trust everyone's had a chance to look through it. So any changes desired by any board member under consent agenda? Having done, motion to approve. Mr. Hodge, second. And second by Mr. Estes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next would be our visitors. I'd like to remind the visitors that the board accords three minutes for your comments, and we would ask that, as we will be cordial in respecting to you, that you would also show that same accord to this board. When you come up to the podium, if you would tell us your name, your address, and we'll allot you three minutes. Again, please, no disparaging remarks, just the facts, if you will. Our first speaker tonight will be Mr. Royce Johnson. Welcome, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. I'd like to request five minutes instead of three.
That will have to come from a majority vote of the board. So is there a motion to allow the speaker five minutes?
Sub move.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You will have five minutes, please, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen. The main reason I'm here is not to discuss the issues that's happened with my two kids, but to discuss the biggest issue of transition plan for all kids within Rutherford County. There's some support here behind me, as you can see. But I'm going to bring this to you from a professional perspective. I've got a letter here. I requested Julie Allison, the owner and operator and therapist and autism consultant of River Oaks Learning Center, to come here, but she could not be here tonight. So I'm going to read her concerns and our concerns as parents. She's writing the letter on behalf of Elijah and Melina Johnson. She's been providing to Elijah and Melina, which are my children, on one-on-one setting in group for over four years. She is very well familiar with my kids. Says, "I hope this letter gives you some insights into autism spectrum disorder and Asperger syndrome. The two children with ASD and AS will present the same, so what works for one child won't necessarily work for another. That's why the IEPs are so important, and transitions are so important." The children's... These children work for another, and that's why they have fundamental brain differences. They can have problems with organization, they can act immature, inappropriate in social settings, and suffer from anxiety and depression. So these kids have a lot going on. There's often a gap in receptive and expressive language comprehension, and so visuals are extremely important for success. They can have an unevenness in their academic performance, so they may require extra time to complete assignments, or in some cases, just quiet time for testing. Children with ASD and AS, to be successful, they need to be in a protective environment and to learn. They need support in the least restrictive environment possible and to support and help to develop their social skills. Children with ASD and AS can rarely identify if they are under stress until it's too late. And, you know, she works with children and tries to get them to recognize physical symptoms and stress, but disruptive behavior in these children, they serve a purpose. It's how they express. When they can't verbally tell you, it's how they express. So that's where you see some of these outbursts. They're not being bratty, they're not being bad. They just can't handle the stress their bodies are experiencing. They're tantrums on how their bodies deals with the stress. Children with ASD and AS have sensory needs that need to be met, and that's what this is about, the bigger picture. It's time for something to change, and it needs to change, because this has been very difficult on my kids and other parents, as you can see. They can have extreme reactions to classroom lighting, sound, noise, odors. Occupational therapists can implement a sensory plan based on the child's needs, but those needs change as the child grows. This isn't something that you predict once, and it works for them for a lifetime. It doesn't work that way. Children with ASD and AS can have extreme difficulty with their transition and change. Changing routine can bring on severe anxiety. This is definitely true for Elijah and Melina. She's seen it just in the therapy since we've been dealing with the issue. Unexpected change and difficult transition can bring a meltdown for both children. They're not able to prepare. We need to be able to prepare them for a change and know what's coming next. One of the biggest issues that gets dealt with is when there's a substitute teacher or when there's multiple teachers. We need to train those teachers. We've got a situation that, you know, if you don't have a trained professional, it hurts the kid, it sets the kid back, it sets the school system. It's for everybody. The therapist needs to be trained, you know, to be given input. Not only does the teacher need to be made aware of their needs, but the parents need to be ahead so we can prepare them. We need to know when there's a substitute, so we can tell them. Sometimes, as a matter, their spelling test... A way of spelling test is given, and a way a teacher lines up the kids can elicit a tantrum. It's the small things that can set them on, that they have struggle processing. If we don't have a proper plan in place for these children, and if that plan is not followed every time, then they're going to fail. The kids will fail. And that is a failure in our system, in us as parents, and the schoolteachers. We need to be better at our transition plan for these kids. Every teacher encounters needs and knows what the difference and triggers are and what to do if behavior occurs. Again, she apologizes for not being here, and I apologize if I've messed up, you know, some of the way she would have read it, but it is time for a change. We need to fix this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And if you desire more time, you can reach Mr. Odom here at the central office. And of course, all of the board members' email addresses and telephone numbers are on the website.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bell? Next is Merle Morton. Give the name and address, please, sir. Three minutes.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, gentlemen. Mark Martin, 1639 Antebellum Drive, Darren Murphysboro. Saying, "I support everything Mr. Johnson said, but from a parent's perspective, we need your voice. We need your voice more than you know. Our children, those..." I have my son Alex here. He's nonverbal, has a life-threatening seizure disorder. "We need your voice. We need you to help us open doors for better education, better ways of learning, and more cooperation between staff, teachers, and everyone in the board, including professionals." "Alex has been recipient from the River Oaks Learning Center for the past eight years, and Ms. Allison has told us time and time again, and I'm not sure what the problem is. This kid has a lot of potential. I need your voice to help open those doors so we can tap into his potential even more." "As a parent, I invite you to my house to... A firsthand look at what we go through with a child with special needs. My wife would even maybe cook you dinner, and you'll love it, because she's a time... She's a great cook. Point is, we are looking forward to a great education for our kids." "And, you know, it's been a journey, to say the least. We've come across some great..." Thank you, Alex. "We've come against some great teachers, and we've come against some opposition. We respect..." And I'm sure I speak for those in attendance, too. "We respect the education, the time and effort it takes for some of these teachers, but we don't want to be disrespected either, as far as that we know our children. There are a lot of issues, too numerous to speak about during this presentation. I just want you, please, 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 open the doors of communication. Realize that, you know, you're not going to get anywhere through intimidation and manipulation tactics. Allow us into our classrooms. Our children can't come home and say, 'Hey, you know, they were mean to me,' or 'A student was mean to me,' or whatever. This is not a prison, okay? These are school systems. Our children deserve a free and appropriate education. Allow us that. Be our voice and take a good look as to what's going on. Listen to your parents. I beseech and beg you, listen to your parents. We know what we're talking about. Our mothers gave birth to these kids, we've risen them, we've gone through the hard times. Back in '09, Alex had a seizure, had to be life flighted to Vanderbilt Children's Hospital. We almost lost him, and that was the second time, okay? If we tell you we need an aide, we need an aide for very specific reasons for that, for his safety, for their safety. Please, don't fight us. Be our voice. I just can't say it enough. We need your help. We need a deeper look into the system and what's going on. We need a deeper look into the politics, maybe the administration. And I just... I know I'm not even coming anywhere close, but Alex needs you. Kids down the road like Alex need you. Please consider and take a few moments after this meeting to discuss what's being said here from us parents. You know, we live it, we walk through it, okay? Again, we have some great educators. We have some great private people, too, out there, like Julie Allison, who's an angel. Alex has gone so far with her. I have a few angels in the school system, too, but let's bring out more angels. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. And I apologize, I shouldn't put your glasses on. It looks like Merle, but...
That's okay.
I apologize for that, so, thank you. Okay, Mr. Odom, number eight.
Number eight is financial matters, and this first one is a building program amendment for Fund 177. This building program amendment addresses three areas. Number A cleans up the line item expenditure for three projects, $76,849 for the Blackman Middle Annex, $203,784 for the Smyrna Primary Edition, and $1,302,286 for Eagleville Phase 1 project. No new funds are involved in either amendment. B amendment moves $415,867 from the Stewart's Creek High Project to the Blackman Middle Annex project. Most or all of these funds may be moved to our next middle school project or middle school land at a later date. C is moves $200,849 from the completed Eagleville Phase 2 addition to the current Eagleville Phase 1 addition. Amendment A is a cleanup amendment, involves no new funding. When a building project is approved, we usually start with a budget with only one or two expenditure lines. More expenditure lines are added and funding is amended to the appropriate expenditure lines as the project moves forward. Our goal is to stay within the total budget for the project. As we wind down the Blackman Middle Annex and Smyrna Primary Edition projects, we may need additional funding to complete the furniture, the fixing, and equipment packages. Amendment B addresses the difference between shared and unshared funds in the building program projects. We have to share borrowed construction funds for K-6 projects with the Muffler City Schools. The city schools get about 14.5% of any borrowed funds that cover our K-6 classrooms. As an example, the Blackman Middle School project includes sixth grade. Therefore, one-third of the funding must be shared money. Two-thirds of the funding for the seventh and eighth grades are not shared. This amendment is part of the process of adjusting the mix of shared and unshared funds in the project in order to optimize our use of shared funds. We're moving $416,867 of unshared funds to this project. Later, we'll be able to transfer up to $416,867 of shared funds to another middle school project. In this instance, we would have borrowed about $70,000 more than the $416,867 in order to share with the city system. Amendment C is cleanup between the two phases of Eagleville expansion. We've anticipated moving the remaining Phase 2 funds to Phase 1. Recommend approval. The motion is to amend the building program budget within project for a total of $76,849 in the Blackman Middle Annex budget, a total of $203,784 in the Smyrna Primary Edition budget, a total of $1,302,286 for Eagleville Phase 1 project, and to transfer $415,867 from the Stewart's Creek High Project to the Blackman Middle Annex project, and to transfer $200,849 from the completed Eagleville Phase 2 addition to the current Eagleville Phase 1 addition as presented.
Heard the last one, Mr. Hodge?
Second.
Now, Mr. Holliday. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have been remiss, Mr. Odom, with everything started. We have two new faces sitting here with us, and I'm sure the viewing...
I should have done that. That was me, I think, I missed that.
It doesn't matter. I just... We have a viewing public, and we have some audience that may not have met our two newest board members, and would like to introduce to the public, if you don't already know, Ms. Lisa Moore and Mr. Jim Estes, and I'm very pleased to have both of you serving with us. Thank you. Please forgive me for not recognizing you earlier.
Thank you.
We'll move on to number nine, Mr. Odom.
Number nine is facilities, and this is a McFadden School of Excellence canopy. Principal Clark Blair has requested permission to construct approximately 1,100 square feet of prefabricated canopy at McFadden School of Excellence on the King's Highway side of the building at the student dismissal area to protect staff and students during poor weather. The canopy is estimated at a cost of just under $10,000 and will be funded by the McFadden PTO, or Parent Teacher Organization, at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board. And a sketch is also in your iPad, if you'd like to look at it. Recommend approval. The motion is to approve the construction of 1,100-square feet canopy at McFadden School of Excellence to be funded by the PTO at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board. I think Gary Cardy told me that some of the preliminary bids for this is going to come in somewhat less than this particular figure.
We had them from $8,600 to $11,000, so we'll go with the $8,600.
Sub move.
Second by Mr. Hodge. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
B is the Cedar Grove Elementary School proposed playground. Mr. Mark Gillian, principal there, is with us this evening, so if you'd like to ask questions, he's available. Principal Mark Gillian has requested permission to construct a third, fourth, and fifth grade playground at Cedar Grove Elementary School. The playground will be funded by the PTO, Parent Teacher Organization, at an estimated cost of $20,000 at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board and be approximately 30 feet by 30 feet. It will be located adjacent to the Cheney Road behind the pay-to-ball court. Rutherford County Schools Engineering and Construction Department has investigated the site, and there is no conflict. At some point, the playground will need to be made ADA accessible, which is American Disabilities Act, and Mr. Gillian has committed to raising funds to the PTO for that purpose. Recommend approval. A motion to approve the construction of a 30-by-30-foot playground for the third, fourth, and fifth grade at Cedar Grove Elementary School at an estimated cost of $20,000 at no cost to the board. The school will be responsible to make the playground ADA accessible in the future. And I think this is... Our board members tonight can see, new board members, how much our community and support organizations really are doing for our schools. They're just really involved.
Before we take a vote, I thought I saw Mr. Gillian come in with a...
He is, right back there.
You had a visual aid?
Yes, sir.
Would you like... Did you want to show that to the board?
I can, yes, sir. We like visual aids. The company was nice enough to bring this out for us. We're actually open to go in four phases. I just hold it up this way. But basically, what we're trying to do this time is just the first phase.
Step by step, just to make it so these can make it see.
But the first phase would be this area right in here.
And what kind of surface is that?
It'd be the playground lawn.
Oh, lawn.
Yes, sir. Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Gillian?
What's your involvement this year?
We're at 9:55, as of today.
Your next move is for eight...
Something like that. But I'm sure he needs all of the areas he can...
Exactly. Thank you, Mr. Gillian. You heard the recommendation.
Sub move.
Mr. Holliday?
Sir.
Mr. Hodge? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And C?
C is another good one. It shows that we handle our money as well, and our construction people are coming through for us. It's the final deductive change order for Stewart's Creek High School. Robert Esper Scan has submitted a final deductive change order in the amount of $293,329.17 for Stewart's Creek High School. The original contract with Biscayne was $39,606,000, and the finished school came in at $39,312,670.83. Recommend approval. A motion to approve the final deductive change order from Robert S. Biscayne at the amount of $293,329.17 to bring the final construction amount down from $39,606,000 to $39,312,670.83.
Heard the recommendation.
Sub move.
Mr. Estes and Mr. Young, any comments? I guess you feel pretty good about that, aren't you, Mr. Cardy? That's a nice little savings.
Anytime we have money left over, we always feel good about it.
Thank you for your efforts.
We just need more to go with it.
Yes, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 10, Mr. Odom.
Number 10 is the 2014 tenure recommendation. And you remember the tenure change, the legislative change, the process, so I'll kind of cover some of this, and we'll look at this. "The following teachers meet the criteria for tenure in accordance with the new tenure law. Number one, they have to hold a valid Tennessee teaching license. Number two, they have served in the Rutherford County Schools for five years. That used to be three years, if you remember. Forty-five months within a seven-year period. The last two in regular, not interim positions. They have demonstrated an overall performance of above expectation or significantly above expectations on their team evaluation during the last two consecutive years of the five-year period." And in layman's terms, we kind of know that as a four or a five on the one-to-five scale. Have to have that. "Or if they previously held tenure under the previous guidelines, they can return to the Rutherford County Schools, meet the two-year probationary period, and tenure is reactivated for them." We do not have listed here, but the people that are not necessarily not being reactivated but are earning it with fours and fives the last two years, if they happen to have two years of a one or two consecutive, they lose their tenure. And Ms. Barnes' office tracks that, so that's what we're going to be doing with teachers now from this point forward. Be glad to read the names there, but I'll go to the motion if you want me to. We'll do that. Recommend approval. "Motion to approve the recommendation of the director of schools to award tenure to the teachers who meet the criteria for 2014." You had ten last year, the fifth year, because of changes in the law. It's why you're seeing the change this year. We're now at a point where more people have met that requirement, that five-year requirement.
Heard the recommendation. Mr. Estes?
Second.
Mr. Holliday? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The board members.
Number 11 is a collaborative conferencing committee. "In pursuant to TCA, Tennessee Code of Annuitated Section 495605, the Board of Education is required to name members appointed to the collaborative conferencing committee. The committee has been revised as follows. Paula Barnes, Richard Zago, Trey Duke, Tom Delbridge, Nivea Sereno, John Dickens, and Clark Blair." And does that take a motion to do that?
It's just for information.
It's an information piece, okay.
Any questions in the board about the committee?
I'm sure the board chair and director of schools are welcome at the meetings, but are they ex officio members?
I'd have to ask our attorney.
Okay.
They have a meeting coming up later this month, this preliminary is scheduled, you know, sometime in September.
Oh, we're welcome to attend, I'm sure. Number 12.
Number 12 is a student discipline appeal. "The board has been requested to review the August 26, 2014 decision from the Disciplinary Hearing Authority, DHA, to uphold the remandment of a student from Stewart's Creek Middle School to Smyrna West Alternative School. This review is pursuant to the provisions of our policy 6.317. The policy states that the board shall review the record or report and shall, one, they can affirm the decision of the DHA, or, two, overturn the decision of the DHA, or, three, modify the decision of the DHA to a lesser penalty, except in cases of zero tolerance, or grant a second hearing, which would be before the board, and, five, deny, request, or board hearing."
I'll assume that the...
Second.
Question by Mr. Hodge and second by Mr. Young. Any comments, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're at 13 with general discussion. Anything on the board? I have a couple of things. Mr. Odom, did you have something you wanted to first?
I have one item that's in your package, small print spreadsheet about this side. Instead of multiple pages, I put it down to one. I did send you, I think by email, a shortened version of this. This is our growth through the 70th day of school. You may be interested to know that today is the 20th day, so we... You may be interested to know that today is the 20th day, so we've actually finished the first school month of this year of 180 days. This is the first 20 is up today. But on this sheet, what you've been seeing most of the time was school name, and you've seen the columns to the far right, which our enrollment as of this 17th day was 41,558 students. And that is an increase of 697 over the prior year. The last column you see is the change in enrollment for that school over the end of the year. So it'll be a plus or minus whether the school increased or decreased. But my, one of my reasons for allowing, showing you this tonight, Mr. Zago keeps up with this, his office and instruction and all, along with the attendance people, is to let you see how we track it. Because I frequently get questions of, "How about class size? How about this?" That sort of information. So we track it this way. Now, your high school pertains to, it's by class that meets. And you have a thing that's, they need at least 15 per class. We have to meet the, no more than, all CTE has to be a 1 to 20 ratio overall. You know, you have it sized, so high schools different. And in elementary school, your K through 3 basically is 1 to 20. Your 4 through 6 is 1 to 25. And your 6 through, excuse me, 4 through 6, 7, and really up is the 1 to 30. Now, the reason I'm showing you this tonight, you see all of the red numbers there? That you kind of see those there? That's what we, that would be a class that, right now, at that school, that particular grade structure might be above that ratio. For example, if it has to be 1 to 20, the state, it cannot be more than 1 to 20.49. They round up, that's what they do, or down. So, but, as we look at that, and they did this with the state law, that not each class has to exactly meet that, but the cluster of K-3, of the cluster of 4, 6 must meet. So as we look at that, and you look at the ratios, the K-3 ratio and the 4, 5 ratio, what Mr. Zago and them will look at, and I don't, you may have, I only see one of those that's over the 20.49. You may have already added that teacher something.
Since the Vern primary...
The Vern primary.
Yes, sir. I addressed that yesterday. I think they have another first grade.
So they earned one yesterday, because that's 20.50, which is greater than 20.49. So there's some technical things here, as you see what we're talking about it, but at any time you wonder when we say, you know, "Why do we use that teacher?" Another point I want to kind of make to you in this is, and we make this to the commission in Hall, too, we run so close to the ratio, because you're gonna see many more schools in here that looks 1 to 18 and a half, or 1 to 19 and a quarter, or something like that in those 1 to 20, that it's not when 20 more students come in. It may be when five more students come in, that it throws you over that number. But anyway, we have a process. We have a methodology for tracking it. So anytime that you're interested in that, you've got your enrollment by school, you've got your enrollment by grade there for you to look at. So thanks to the Mr. Zago Instruction Department for tracking this for us. Any questions on that that you'd like to? Just thought I'd let you in on those, too.
It looks like we've grown exponentially each week. Is that the way it's normally happened through the past school years, or is this one a little different?
It's not terribly different this year.
No, sir. It usually starts to settle out about now. I expect, and I emailed Mr. Odom, I'm expecting about another 75 to 100 students between now and sometime toward the end of the school year, but it'll settle out. We only gained 14 students, I think, from Monday of last week to Tuesday of this week.
We will now begin tracking, like the numbers. We'll not track it against the first, the last day of last year. We'll start tracking is, what is the end of the first month compared to the first month last year? And one of the big months that goes into the state's formula for the average data membership funding is third month, and that's typically the one Jeff comes back with and will talk to you about. We'll compare third month this year to third month last year. It's really a better measure than comparing to the end of last year, but, you know, we have what we have at this point. We didn't complete even the first month until today. So that kind of lets you know how we process that and track it.
Prior to the meeting, I was talking with Chairman Hodge about the upcoming TSBA Fall District Meeting. Past TSBA President Amy Markham from Bedford County had asked if we would be interested in going to a different district meeting. I was scheduled for Thursday, September 25, in Dixon, Tennessee. Bedford County and some of the other counties will be meeting in Lewisburg next Thursday. Is that the 11?
Right.
If you're interested in maybe not going through Nashville and going to Lewisburg, or I guess we go around Nashville through 840 now, but what would be the pleasure of the board? Would you rather go to Lewisburg or go to Dixon?
Ten wise, it's about the same, right?
Pretty much. Just, it just moves it up, moves it up a couple of inches.
So it's like they may have gone, I mean, if they went to look, or maybe they could have heard, but...
Yes, sir. As advantages. So what is the 11 work out for? And while we're thinking about that, talking with Ms. Michaels, our next work section will be next week, Tuesday, the 16th, and our board meeting will be Thursday, the 18th. If you don't want to make a decision tonight, Ms. Michaels, would you hold the board members tomorrow?
Correct.
And see which location majority would like to go?
Sure.
Is that okay with the board? Mr. Holliday?
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Travel. It's always, you know, 4:30 is a travel. It's a particular challenge, but my schedule is not one to dictate for the entire board. We'll work it out.
Anything else? Beg the patience of the board. This is my first time in this seat. I'm sure I'll get a little smoother, and it'll flow a little better, and I certainly have Chairman Hodge and Mr. Me and Mr. Odom pull me out of a jam. I will come up with something catchy. Chairman Wise always had a disfavorited way to adjourn as Chairman Burns and as Chairman Hodge, so I'll come up with something a little different than the past chairman. Oh, okay. Anybody have anything about Mr. Johnson's presentation? Would you like Mr. Odom, too?
The autism spectrum, autism spectrum disorder. And, you know, I've been in education long enough now and watched the numbers and the percentages, and that changed drastically. You know, it hasn't been too many years ago, and it was 10 in a thousand, and then 20 in a thousand, and then you read numbers like 50 in a thousand, and some of the numbers that I've been hearing recently, some are saying 70 per thousand and 80 per thousand, but the numbers are going up.
One in 54.
How much you seeing that?
One in 54.
One in 54. So those numbers are going up. So it's certainly a bigger concern for us, you know, I think, in the whole thing, and we do have training and that sort of thing associated with it. And exactly what you're talking about with transitions for children with these two, with spectrum disorder, any change or anything like that, like you say, transitioning or changing, be it classroom or routines, or that sort of thing, we recognize that as an issue. But we do, we do do training and all in that. The other issue is there, each child is unique and different, and so you look at that and have to try to make those particular changes. But it's a definite concern for us. I know Ms. Bell is here, and I mean, she can talk about some of the training we do that we offer, and some of the mandatory training that we do, and dealing with that. But any board member, just to let you know, I mean, it's definitely on our radar. It's something that you, that we need to look at, we have to look at.
I appreciate the members of the public coming this evening and look forward to the opportunity to visit with them after the meeting and learn more about the circumstances that have brought them to our boardroom tonight. But presentations were very well stated, and appreciate the input of the public always.
Anybody else? Again, it's more welcome, and please, it's served you, Mr. Estes. It's been served. And board member to be looking for a question about the district meeting, Ms. Joyce, tomorrow. Let her know your preference, and majority will rule. So, Mr. Odom, anything else?
Yes, sir.
And I'll come up with something a little catchy. We stand adjourned.